Welcome to Soundside and welcome to the KUOW District Dash. I'm Libby Dankman. This is politics reporter for KUOW David Hyde. We're so happy to have you here. We've invited all of the council candidates in this year's city council races to answer the questions that voters most want addressed. But we know that you're busy, so we are trying to get through this in 30 minutes. It's a dash and it's going to go fast. If a candidate goes overtime for an answer, you will hear this. Or this. We're serious about staying on the clock, folks. So today we're headed to District Seven, which will, starting in January, include downtown Seattle, South Lake Union, Queen Anne, and Inter Bay. Welcome to the candidates vying to represent District Seven. Current council member Andrew Lewis, running for his second term in office. Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
And retired Navy commander and stay at home dad Bob Kettle. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me.
I'm so happy to have both the candidates here. And David Hyde is going to start us off with questions.
All right. One of the issues that's on the mind of District Seven voters is crime. And Andrew, crime's been on the rise. Violent crime's been on the rise since you've been on the council. Why should voters in District Seven trust you to be the best candidate to address that issue moving forward?
Well, what we've really seen throughout the last couple of years during COVID is a national rise in violent crime. Seattle's been no exception tragically. I've rolled up my sleeves. I've worked with stakeholders like the Downtown Seattle Association and co-lead to stand up innovative new responses to public safety concerns like the Just Care Program, where we've seen demonstrable decreases in criminal activity in the areas where we've removed encampments through working with Just Care, where we place everybody that's in that cohort into a hotel-based shelter with wraparound services. There's been a demonstrable decrease in 911 call volume in those areas where we've done those activities. One in five shootings in the city occur in a homeless encampment. So by doing this work of getting people inside where they can be safe, where they can be housed, by making sure that we're remediating those encampment locations and reopening those spaces for commerce, this is how we can start to combat it. We have to look at the data. We have to do the innovations that we know will work.
All right, Bob Kettle, similar question for you. You don't have any experience in Seattle city government. Why are you the person that voters should most trust to address this issue, violent crime?
Because I've been working the issues on the ground. You know, in Queen Anne, I've been a member of the Queen Anne Community Council Board for eight years until I ruled off last year, where I was asked and stood up the Public Safety Committee, founding member of the Queen Anne Block Watch Network, and also currently also on the West Precinct Advisory Council. So I'm working these issues all the time as a community member. And, you know, unfortunately, we're in the situation because of the permissive environment that's been created by the current city council. It started with the mistakes of the defund piece the incumbent included on. And it's created this environment where we do have this, you know, criminal set that's happening. And contrary to what was said, you know, Seattle is one of three cities where the violent crime to your question is going up. And it really comes about from this permissive environment that's been created. And it plays out in so many ways with the criminal set, but then also with the random acts of violence and the lawlessness that you see. And we saw it just recently on our buses, on King County Metro buses this week.
Bob Kettle, you've talked about the need to hire, fully staff the police department. But research is mixed on the results of adding more police to a given city. Some accounts say that hiring more officers reduces the homicide and violent crime rate, but it also increases the number of arrests for petty nonviolent crime that disproportionately impact Black communities. What reforms do you propose to lessen the negative interactions between people of color and police?
First, I definitely believe in, we need to staff up the police department because, you know, having that presence really goes to that permissive environment point that I made. But to your question, we really need to build on the consent decree, which we have, and I think we can still do it. And I participated directly, going to the earlier question, with the Before the Badge Program. You know, the sad thing is if the whole Seattle were able to sit on the two hours I spent with this West Precinct addition of the Before the Badge, they would see these new recruits and how they want to publicly serve and how they go to each of the neighborhoods and learn the issues that exist in terms of languages or culture. And they see how they need to adjust in terms of their policing styles. And it's a great program and it's going to really make a difference for, for our city. And so these are the things that we need to build upon. And unfortunately, like I said, nobody in Seattle really knows about the Before the Badge Program, and they should.
Andrew Lewis, you have said that defund the police was a mistake. You've also called for the expansion of civilian public safety initiatives. You mentioned some of them earlier. You've said the outreach workers, you've said that outreach workers are effective at supplementing police. But you've also been in office since 2020. What has taken you so long to build out alternatives to uniformed police?
Well, we've actually built out quite a few alternatives to police. I mean, to kind of go back to the question that you just asked Bob, but I think it's responsive to this one as well. One of the initiatives that has been the most impactful has been merging the We Deliver Care Team on Third Avenue with the police emphasis presence that's on Third Avenue from the West Precinct. It's enhanced the public safety mission by having a team of people who are uniformly BIPOC with lived experience, who are trained in de-escalation and public health best practices. They intervene in situations where the police are not best positioned to intervene, to de-escalate community members in crisis and break up situations that could lead to street violence or to crime. This has been a universally good addition to our downtown. It's very popular with the merchants. It's very popular with the Downtown Seattle Association. It's something that we need to build on and expand. We also, just a couple of weeks ago, launched our new care department with Mayor Harrell, which will be sending first response akin to the Denver Star Program. And we need to build on that in a second term, and I will.
Just to follow up on that, again, the program that you mentioned is, we'll pause for technical support there. Just to follow up on that, the program you mentioned, it's limited right now to the Third Avenue corridor. You know, George Floyd was murdered in 2020. There's been years of calls to beef up alternatives to policing. What is holding things back so far? And what would you change in another term? And we'll give you 30 seconds.
Yes, for our first two years of these efforts as a council where we've been united in wanting to have these interventions, we did not have a very effective partner in Mayor Durkin. Mayor Durkin was not interested in standing up these services. Mayor Harrell is very interested in it. We've made a lot of progress in the last year in building the Care Department, Community Assisted Response and Engagement Department, which will be doing the service akin to Albuquerque and Denver. We have a pilot that's hitting the ground in October. Next year, I want to work to scale that to more, to more communities, and we can do that.
30 seconds to you, Bob.
Yeah, this is about good governance. We need engaged, positive engaged leadership out of the city council. We've not had it in the last four years. We need to be bringing in all the stakeholders. It hasn't happened the last four years. And because of the city council was like this all the time, they've not been effective. And that's where we are today. And so this is one of the reasons why I'm running, because we need that, you know, leadership piece to be present and to get things done. And it just hasn't happened in the last four years.
Andrew, this one's for you. Recently, Target announced that it's closing two locations in Seattle due to shoplifting. There was a subsequent Seattle Times story that said, "Some shoppers are questioning whether crime is really to blame." The downtown Target remains open. So what do you think? Is shoplifting a serious problem for Target and other businesses in Seattle? If not, why not? If so, what should the city council do moving forward to address it?
Yeah, organized retail crime is a really big problem in the city of Seattle and around the country, around the world. It's an international criminal enterprise. Working together with Councilmember Herbold, we commissioned an audit to look into what the best intergovernmental practices would be to come to grips with how multifaceted the problem of organized retail crime is. Because these are international criminal syndicates that will steal things in one city. They will move them across borders to another to fence them. One city alone cannot solve this problem. You really have to come together. That audit has revealed a series of recommendations that we are now incorporating into our budget process. One thing I'm particularly interested in that'll have implications beyond organized retail crime is rapid video response, which is a practice used in the United Kingdom that has increased police response times by 656% by allowing remote reporting in a much more efficient and streamlined way. This is something we should be doing, not just for organized retail crime, but for all sorts of property crimes in the city.
Same question. How serious of a problem do you think it is? And what would you do differently to address it if you're elected?
It's a massive problem. And again, things that we should be doing in the last four years, we haven't seen it being done. And to the question on Target, you know, you just have to work issues like I've done in Queen Anne, the hillside on Aurora, just south Aurora Bridge. When you're there and you're at the Rapid Rides bus stops, you see the Target bags and they're being used. That is the, you know, the indication that Target is being suffering. So those that are saying, you know, the retail threat is not a factor, you know, they haven't been on the ground there at Rapid Ride on Aurora and seeing those bags from those individuals that have been, you know, targeting those Target stores. And that's something that we have to, you know, understood fully. And so, again, it comes back to, you know, working together because not only do we need SPD staffing up, but we also need to work with King County. This is such a huge piece to this because King County has a responsibility, including the KC Metro, traffic security, transit security. We need to have an all hands on deck effort. And unfortunately, we've had none of that. And it starts with the city council kind of infighting, you know, that going to the, with the mayor, as you mentioned with Mayor Durkin. And then, so then what were we doing with the state and the county? It's just not quite there.
Let's talk about downtown. Bob Kettle, downtown has struggled since the pandemic. A University of Toronto study tracked unique cellphone users in downtowns across North America, comparing data from 2019 to today. Researchers ranked Seattle 55th out of 62 for recovery. We are doing better than Portland and San Francisco, I will note. We've already talked about your plans for crime prevention and public safety. But what else can be done to bring back downtown? And you have one minute.
Basically, number one thing is we have to create that safe base. You know, it doesn't matter if it's a big or small business, you know, the customers, the clients need to be get there. Their workers need to get there. And they often go on buses. And as we saw this week, that's a challenge. So we, again, we have to have a safe base across all areas, whether it's transit, right there in front of the businesses and the like. And once that's done, and then that is understood, and then it's a chance to activate. You know, the mayor's activation plan for downtown is key as part of this. And, but we all need to be participating in it, but it also has to start with a safe base. And that's why we keep coming back to that, and that's why it's so important.
Do you want any more time? You've got 20 seconds.
Yes, I can add, you know, every time I see you and David look to the clock, I was like, okay, I'm out. Three seconds left, so.
I understand.
I only got three seconds left, but.
Let's give you 30 more seconds here. Yeah.
So, yeah, so it's key is to, you know, really to bring in all the pieces and to support those small businesses and the retail businesses. And I should add also the arts, you know, we have to include them as well because that's an area that's been suffering more than any, both in downtown and I should add uptown. And so it's a question of, you know, getting the, you know, the police, you know, to be on the ground, you know, creating that safe base. It's about, you know, looking to, you know, open up those storefronts with different plans that are existing, maybe with the arts and the like, and create that image that we have moving forward.
Andrew Lewis, same question. Beyond public safety, since we've been talking about that so far today, what more can be done to bring back downtown?
I definitely have more than 40 seconds of ideas on this topic. So, I mean, what I would just say is getting back to downtown is not a matter of reverting to the pre-COVID status quo. That downtown is not coming back. We are not coming back to a downtown that's going to have the same density of office workers. Downtowns have to evolve. You know, we still need a center of commerce, of culture that downtowns provide, but that means more residents in the core of our downtown to replace people who used to be office worker commuters. It means converting some of that office space into housing. It means doubling down on our arts and culture sector in downtown Seattle. I'm very proud to have worked with Seattle International Film Festival to acquire and reopen the Cinerama, which will reopen this year under a new name. We need to be working on our innovative place-based public safety strategies, like We Deliver Care, which I mentioned earlier. And I would say we have encouraging statistics, right? I mean, like we, hotel occupancy is back to what it was pre-COVID. Like out-of-city visitors are back to what it was pre-COVID. We're making a lot of progress. There's a lot of momentum and we need to keep it going.
When I ask about drug policy, you recently cosponsored a new law about drugs in Seattle authorizes the Seattle City Attorney to prosecute for public use and possession. Stated goal is to prioritize getting people into treatment over making arrests, but there's no significant new revenue for treatment in that bill that you sponsored. So the question is, how effective is it going to be at either major goal? Helping drug users get treatment and also protecting the public?
Yeah, I mean, the first thing I would say is like, we are now getting into the budget, which is going to be the financial component of the strategy. So I am working with my colleagues to find some innovative ways to put in more resources. In our supplemental budget, we actually put in a 34% increase in pre-file diversion for the city attorney's office for this purpose. So there are some new resources that we're bringing to bear. Second, there's a lot of value that we can bring to bear in coordinating the resources that we already have. We have lots of organizations that are doing great work. Evergreen Treatment Services, the Public Defender Association. And a lot of the efforts that we have put forward, not just through our legislation, but the complimentary executive order that Mayor Harrell promulgated last week, has really been designed around harmonizing all of those responses so that we're effectively intervening, doing warm handoffs to service providers, getting people into treatment. And then failing that, if we need to hold people accountable who continue to use drugs in public in a way that is detrimental to commerce and to the quality of life in the city, those enforcement mechanisms are still there and still available.
Bob Kettle, same question. How effective do you think this new drug ordinance will be at the two goals? Helping people get into treatment and protecting the public?
Not very. You know, the unfortunate thing is the June 6 bill should have been passed. I would have been a co-sponsor of that bill. And unfortunately, the flip-flop on this has created this, you know, 105-day delay. And what's interesting on this too, by the way, is when the mayor brought his plan out, starts off by saying that the state law that we were trying to align municipal code with already said that officers will be, you know, in terms of referral for assessment and services. The provisions were already in the state law. And the state law also noted that public drug use is a threat to public health and safety. The mayor's bill had that straight there in front. So we were hearing about the, you know, the first council bill not having that, you know? And then we're hearing from the mayor's bill that yes, the state law already accounted for that. So we already had those in place. And then we also heard that, you know, part of the reason why we couldn't vote for this is because of the community court. But does the new bill, including, you know, the amendments that were passed from council members, Lewis and Herbold, really make that difference? Are those articulable facts really clearing things up? I would say no.
Do you want to respond?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's a mischaracterization of the bill that we passed in collaboration with Mayor Harrell. There is broad language in the state legislation saying that jurisdictions should make an effort to engage in diversion and referrals to treatment. The initial conversation that we had in June did not emphasize that as the primary way that we were going to be handling this issue. The new issue, or the new ordinance that we have emphasizes warm handoff directly from law enforcement to provider. It doesn't bog our courts down with trying to convict people for publicly using drugs.
One more follow-up on this one. As you know, critics say even this new law will possibly resurrect the war on drugs, which disproportionately harmed people of color. Andrew Lewis, what's your response to that criticism?
I don't agree with that characterization because the emphasis that we have is trying to eschew the criminal legal system entirely in the overwhelming majority of cases. The previous bill in June envisioned, we are going to charge people and put them into court and have the court be the entity that is going to sort people out into treatment or incarceration. That is the system that is more akin to the war on drugs. Having a system where we are telling law enforcement, we want you to do in-the-field warm handoffs from providers, well-established providers like law enforcement assisted diversion, that is distinct. That is definitely not what the war on drugs was in the 80s.
Andrew Lewis, sorry, Bob Kettle, Andrew Lewis just brought up both bills. So I wonder if you could address the fact that you supported both of them in the context of this concern about the first one, he's saying, resurrecting the war on drugs potentially harming, which we know harmed people of color disproportionately. So what's your response to that concern?
You know, I'd like to say first, you know, I believe that in order to succeed in public safety, we have to succeed in public health. Otherwise, we're just running the standstill. And the main factor here is that we don't have the, you know, the resources. We don't have the capacity on the public health side. So that's a key point that needs to be understood. On the bill itself, the bill with the mayor's executive order, the first bill, would have addressed these pieces that we are talking about. But again, unfortunately, we had a 105-day delay with not really much added to the original bill that, in combination with a mayor executive order, would have answered the call.
We're going to take a quick, just breather question here because this has been a sprint. Pallet cleanser, first to you, Andrew Lewis. If you have a free afternoon in District Seven, if your schedule clears up, where's your favorite place to spend time?
Yeah, gosh, a free afternoon, like, oh, my God. I mean, if I can be doing anything in the downtown core on our waterfront, like if I can go to lunch at Iver's, if I can go get some clam nectar at Iver's, which, you know, my family finds disgusting, but I think is great. You know, if I can take in an afternoon baseball game, unfortunately can't do that for a while now, but, but love going to Mariners baseball games in an afternoon, especially in the summer. So that's some of how I would spend my time.
Bob Kettle?
You know, the first thing that comes to my mind now is I'm a candidate. As you know, I'm also a stay-at-home dad. And, you know, being a candidate and a stay-at-home dad is a challenge. And so the first thing I would think about doing is, you know, spending that afternoon with my daughter, you know, watching her play soccer or lacrosse or, you know, and the like. And because I will say, hey, being a candidate, the campaign, and Andrew's a fellow girl dad too, is that it's really difficult. And so I credit to those that do it. And so I would spend my afternoon with my daughter, probably doing some sports piece, basketball. She's a huge storm. So that would be my number one answer, taking my daughter to another Seattle storm game.
All right. Andrew Lewis, we're going to talk about the budget and taxes for a second. Critics say that Seattle currently has a regressive tax code that disproportionately harms low-income residents. One new progressive tax idea is a proposed CEO high-pay ratio tax. This tax would kick in only when the CEO is paid at a much higher rate than most of their workers. San Francisco already has a voter-approved CEO pay ratio tax, which generated over $100 million last year. Would you support something similar? Yes or no, and why?
I don't think I would, only in the sense that we are basically doing that through the Jump Start tax. The Jump Start tax is a tax on payroll. The higher the payroll, the higher the rate of that tax. So what I would really want to look at is if we had a CEO pay tax, can it align with the Jump Start tax? Or are we vulnerable to legal challenge that we're in essence double taxing the same thing? I'd also want to look to see how much money a potential tax like that would even raise. Because sometimes we have these ideas that are raised to levy a certain task, tax on sort of a niche category, and it comes back and it would be, you know, more trouble than it's worth. So, you know, I think that when we're really looking at this, we made a really big stride in this last council towards having a more equitable tax code through Jump Start, which functionally taxes the same thing. So I'd want to really look and see how it would be different before I would commit to anything like that.
Bob Kettle, similar question. What's your stance on a high-pay ratio tax on CEOs in Seattle? Do you support the idea? Why or why not?
I'm not in favor of these targeted tax proposals, partly because, you know, these tax proposals are being layered on top of each other like Band-Aids. And, you know, I get, I get to the point where I'm thinking that they're working cross purposes. As you know, Councilmember Alex Peterson has endorsed me. And one of the things he said that was the point about fiscal responsibility. And in our discussions, we need to look at our budget process because I reject the premise that we have a deficit issue. We really have a budget issue. We have all these silos. We have these, you know, walls and the like. And we need to work through those and look at the budget process. Also doing that good governance piece in terms of looking over the programs, are they really delivering on what we're paying them for? Are they meeting their goals? Are they meeting the mission? Oftentimes, I think maybe not. And so we need to do that piece, that due diligence, you know, part of good governance, look at the budget structure, all these silos and the like, and then look at, you know, what we can do on the tax piece. Because we do in the state, you know, we do have regressive nature to our taxes, but we should do it, you know, taking a deep breath, looking at the whole thing and saying, how can we do this in a comprehensive way as opposed to these little targeted taxes? Or in some cases, big targeted taxes.
First seagulling of the debate.
The dreaded gull.
It was only because of, you know, the interaction I was getting between you two.
I want to go to perhaps the biggest hot button issue this year and every year here in Seattle, which is parking, on-street parking. Urban planners, or some urban planners, I should say, say Seattle has too much of it. What do you think, Bob Kettle? Does Seattle have too much on-street parking?
I think it's about right. I think I've been downtown, everywhere downtown, as you know, as a candidate. And before that, in Uptown and Belltown and South Lake Union, West, East Lake, South Lake, West Lake, Queen Anne, Inter Bay, and Magnolia, just to get everybody in. And, you know, so the, the parking, I think, is just about right. One issue that I've learned in terms of going around and talking to residents, talking to business owners, is that we need to think about logistics. We need to think about how we can make the city run, particularly for businesses. So what we don't have enough parking for is delivery trucks and the like. And this goes to when looking at the production, you know, we're building these, you know, new buildings as part of the rezones and the like. We really need to have that kind of thought ahead of time, looking at the logistics piece. So I have two words, loading docks. And so we need to be smart on that. Otherwise, we're going to create problems on our streets, which goes to, you know, the parking issue that we're facing. And many people are probably seeing.
Andrew Lewis, same question. On-street parking, too much?
I think it depends on the city that we want to build, right? I mean, like if, I think that the best thing to come out of our response to the COVID pandemic has been these streeteries and these activations of a lot of our urban spaces to be more dynamic places where there's more interaction between storefront pedestrian and the community. Undoubtedly, Ballard Avenue has improved considerably from so much of the public right-of-way going from parking to these uses that are for people. And I think that when we really look at it, what is the opportunity cost of the current amount of our right-of-way that is dedicated to parking? I think that there's definitely some better and more innovative ways that we can reclaim that public space and that we can make it safer. Make it safer for people, you know, like my daughter, who's 10 months old, who's going to grow up in this community and, and make sure that, you know, I don't have to chronically be worried that, that she or another community member is going to get hit by a car. So I think that what we should really be looking into is what is the best use of our public right-of-way? Is there an opportunity cost to this much of it being for parking? And that's what I would like to explore.
Is that a too much? A yes?
I think it's a too much, yeah.
Andrew Lewis, both you and your opponent told KUOW that you support Seattle's existing policy on homeless encampment removal. The city can currently clear homeless encampments with no notice or offer of services if the tents are deemed to be obstructions. Is the city currently clearing too many encampments like this without making sure it has treatment and shelter options in place?
No, I don't think so. I think that Mayor Harrell has struck a good balance with his team. You know, I've been one of the folks giving feedback to the formation of the Unified Care Team. I was the only city council member to serve on Mayor Harrell's Public Safety Transition Team. And in that process, one of the things I emphasized was we really cannot make meaningful progress on public safety, including for the residents of these encampment locations, unless we are figuring out a way to effectively and efficiently remediate encampment locations, move people into enhanced shelter like tiny house shelters, and really seriously look at the impact that some of these encampments have, not just on the broader community, but people who are living in them. The biggest victims of violent crime in the city are people experiencing homelessness. In a lot of cases, it's because of the dynamics in some of these encampment locations. We do not have those problems in tiny house villages. We don't have those problems in enhanced shelter locations. The path forward is scaling more of those opportunities and getting folks out of those encampments and into those kinds of shelters where they'll be safe.
Bob Kettle, same question. Is the city clearing too many encampments without making sure it has treatment and shelter options in place?
No, you know, the mayor, like Andrew was saying, is working this through very well. Bottom line here though is we have to remember that these encampments are inhumane. These are not places that people should be, and we should be working to move them to other options in terms of housing and the like. And to remain where they are is just inhumane. And, you know, I've been around the world and throughout my naval career, and I've seen some difficult areas. and I've seen some difficult areas, and it's shocking to me that we have this here in Seattle, such a, you know, affluent city, but yet we still have these encampments. And so we really need to work through them. And again, this goes back to the good governance piece and also the idea that we need to build capacity on the public health side. And we've had four years to do that, and it hasn't happened. You know, we hear about different programs. We keep hearing about them, and then nothing happens. We hear, okay, moving forward, they're going to happen. And that's, that's the challenge that we have, which is unfortunate because we still have the encampments, we still have people living in these inhumane, and as noted, you know, there's a lot of violence, and it's just shouldn't be happening.
All right, we're going to close with the patented District 7 lightning round. So these are one-word answers. Hopefully, it should be fun. First one, Space Needle or Smith Tower?
Space Needle.
Space Needle.
Should Seattle close Pike Place Market to car traffic? Yes or no?
Yes.
No.
Who did you vote for in the 2021 mayor's race?
Gonzalez.
Bruce Harrell.
Do you support building more public permanent supportive housing in every neighborhood in your council district?
Yes.
Yes.
Cary Park or Lake Union Park?
Lake Union Park.
Marshall Park.
Nirvana or Heart?
Nirvana.
Just to be different, I will go with Heart because I love the Wilson.
All right. And the last one, Beecher's Cheese, underrated or overrated?
Underrated.
Underrated, of course.
I think that was the right answer. Yeah. Okay, candidate closing statements now.